Good evening, welcome to the January 26 Valley View School Board Meeting. Thanks for you who came out and risked life and limb in the traffic and the slick roads, so we will get this meeting started. Mr. Goojus, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Ask everybody.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Member Saikora, would you do the board affirmation statement, please?
Our mission is to ensure that all students are prepared for college and a successful life academically, socially, and emotionally, as well as equipped with the necessary tools to have options and make decisions about their long-term goals. This will be accomplished by believing and working towards all students learning through rigorous curricula and meaningful effective instruction, consequently demonstrating mastery on high-quality assessments with all stakeholders being held accountable throughout the process.
Thank you. Dr. Mitchum, agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to ask that the board approve the revised agenda with revisions to action item 12.1 as presented.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Motion seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those same sign, ayes have it. Dr. Mitchum, consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to ask that the board approve consent agenda items 5.1, approval of board meeting minutes 1:12:15, 5.2, executive session meeting minutes 1:12:15, 5.3, gifts for Jonas Salk and Tibbet Elementary Schools, as well as Romeo Ville High School, and 5.4, trips for Romeo Ville High School. So moved.
Motion approved?
Second.
Motion seconded. Since I think there's probably some money in there, we need a roll call vote, please, if there's no discussion.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Saikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Next up, pillars of Valley View, student and staff recognition. First is Bolingbrook High School. Ms. Jordan is one of those people who live life and limb.
I'm out of breath now, so our pillars are going to come up and we're going to celebrate them. I'm happy to be here, and like you said, it's pretty slick out there. So, good evening, President Quigley, school board members, Dr. Mitchum, senior leadership and VVS D community. It is with great pleasure that Bolingbrook High School is honoring three of our most dedicated staff from our maintenance department as pillars of Valley View. Samuel Gonzalez, Jose Bustamante, and Sherri Muttwiler are folks on the front lines who keep BHS operating smoothly and provide important services to the students, staff, and administration. It is important to acknowledge how much they mean to us. They are not being honored just for their work in school, but as people. They are some of the most devoted and reliable employees at Bolingbrook High School. Sammy Gonzalez came to us from Florida, which I'm sure he would like to go back to today, where he was a landscape designer at the Magic Kingdom in 2000. At Bolingbrook High, we are very fortunate to have Sammy working on the grounds. The beautiful landscaping around BHS is a result of hours of hard work Sammy puts in while doing what he does best, loving and caring for the school. Sammy is respectful to everyone and is always looking to help in any way he can. Sammy and his wife Adelia, who's in the audience, have lived in Bolingbrook since 1996 and have six grown children. Next, we have Jose Bustamante, who started with Valley View School District as the supervisor for the night cleaning crew at BHS. In 2006, BHS was fortunate enough to hire Jose as permanent staff. Jose consistently goes above and beyond to help BHS, make it be the special place that it is. Jose and his wife, Yessenia, who's also in the audience, have three beautiful children, Christian, who's 17, Jocelyn, who's 14, and Jackie, who's eight. In his free time, he enjoys camping with his wonderful family. And last, but definitely not least, Sherri Muttwiler has been with the district since 1991. Sherri's days begins very early as she opens up the building and gets ready for the staff and students. She is one of the first faces students and staff see as they enter. No matter what anyone asks her to do, no matter anything, she is always willing and completes her work in a timely manner, which is a testament to the pride she takes at Bolingbrook High School. Sherri and her husband Scott have three grown children. I am honored to have this opportunity to recognize three of our pillars this evening. Thank you for all you do.
Next up, Avedo Martinez Middle School, and member Goojus.
Good evening, members of the board, senior leadership, Dr. Mitchum, and the Valley View community. It is my privilege to introduce you to Mr. James Partage. Mr. Partage is one of our eighth-grade science teachers, and he is the key leader for his department. He has taught at AVM for 13 years and is well-respected by his colleagues. Since meeting Mr. Partage almost four years ago, his continued growth and desire to positively impact students is evident in the evolution of his instructional practices and in his leadership of the science department. As the next-generation science standards have begun to impact the department, and as we have begun to train our staff in visible learning, Mr. Partage's leadership and enthusiasm have flourished. We can also count on Mr. Partage to challenge our thinking as he routinely thinks of multiple perspectives to share during leadership team conversations. We look forward to seeing how our eighth-grade students will grow and how the science department will continue to evolve under Mr. Partage's leadership. And I would also like to thank his wife Judy Partage, who's in the audience, who is also one of our staff at AVM as a lunchroom helper, and his daughter Amelia, whose favorite subject is science, so he's got a lasting impression at home as well. So, thank you, Mr. Partage.
Good evening, members of the board, senior leadership, and the Valley View community. It is with great pleasure that Jamie McGee nominates supported education teacher Stephanie Master Giovanni to be our pillar of Valley View. Ms. Master Giovanni has been an educator in our district since 1979 and will be retiring at the end of this year. She has worked at Humphrey, Salk, Tibbet, Independence, Woodview, and has been at Jamie McGee since 1991. In her time in our district, Stephanie has truly seen it all, year-round school, self-contained special education, you name it. She has experienced countless shifts in educational philosophy and worked with hundreds upon hundreds of students. Throughout her tenure, one thing has remained constant, and that is Stephanie's caring nature and passion and commitment for seeing her students succeed. She ensures that each and every one of her students are challenged and treated with respect. She'll try any strategy if it means she may better meet her students' needs. Her passion and enthusiasm for her students is an example for us all. It is my privilege to recognize Ms. Stephanie Master Giovanni as our pillar of Valley View.
Next up, BHS Cheerleading Coaches Association Junior Varsity State Finalists.
Good evening, thank you for having us here, board members, senior leadership, and community. My name is Chuck Merrick, I'm representing the Bolingbrook High School Athletic Department. And on behalf of the Athletic Department, we'd like to recognize the outstanding efforts of a group of young student athletes, our junior varsity cheerleading team. Both our varsity and JV cheerleading teams are some of the hardest-working squads in the school, and their hard work paid off with both squads receiving trips or invitations to the ICCA state finals. I'd like to proudly introduce our junior varsity girls' coach, Ms. Tracy Felice.
Thank you, Chuck. Dr. Mitchum, President Quigley, Vice President Goojus, Goojus, board members, and senior leadership, I would like to thank you for our continued support of the BHS cheerleading program. I would like to especially thank the Athletic Department at BHS for their continued support. We are very lucky to have such a supportive Athletic Department and staff. I would also like to thank their parents, who have shown great support with their signs, cheers throughout our many competitions. Finally, I would like to thank Coach Tammy North and the varsity co-ed cheer team for their support throughout our year. We have had a successful year, we qualified for the ICCA Cheer State Championship, we finished ninth out of 22 teams competing. These cheer athletes have worked very hard since May of last year, where they cheered for football, basketball, and a competitive cheer season. It is an honor to coach its dedicated athletes, and the members of our cheer team are Faith Kiara Jones,
For anybody who doesn't think cheerleading is tough, you've got a girl in the hallway with a pair of crutches, you've got a girl up here with a torn shoulder muscle. Hey, it is a very tough sport, and it is a sport. They're very athletic and they're out there all the seasons, so, good job, girls. And thank you, parents. Next up, Principal Kinder, if you would, please. RHS Cheerleading State Finalists.
Good evening, President Quigley, Vice President Goojus, Secretary Hanson, members of the board, Dr. Mitchum, senior leadership, members of the audience, and members of the community. On behalf of Romeo Ville High School, I'd like to thank the board for recognizing our Romeo Ville High School JV cheer team that took eighth place at the ICC Springfield State Championship this year. And we have eight, yeah, go ahead, round of applause. We have eight of the 15 team members that are here with us this evening, so if you could acknowledge each one as we call them up. The first, we have Erica Allen, Lauren Jacobs, Jennifer Mendez. And last, but definitely not least, Suzie Nowack. Congratulations, girls, on an excellent state finish, and definitely thank you to Coach Kinder and Coach Johnson, who couldn't be here this evening, one due to illness and the other one due to a choreography appointment with Lewis University. So, congratulations, girls.
Thank you, Principal Kinder. Give them the parade wave, we saw it. As this is a school night, we know that you guys have stuff to do and homework and what have you, so don't feel that you need to stay beyond your presentations. So, thank you, girls. And we have one more coming in.
We have one more.
But those of you who are already done, you're done.
Me, Bolingbrook.
Come on back, Bolingbrook.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Due to the weather, and, go ahead, the rest of the team.
See another broken leg. It's a tough sport. One more group picture.
I just have one more girl to mention. She broke her leg while we were practicing, and she definitely needs to be recognized, Andrea Molar.
Yeah.
You can just wave.
You can just wave.
Couldn't get a red cast?
Coach, what do you do to them?
Good job, girls, thank you again. Thank you, coaches. Drive safe, guys. As room, please, we'll get back to business, liaison reports. Any and all, liaison reports from my left.
With regards to Wilco, we are proposing, finance committee met, there has not been a raise in tuition for 12 years. There will be a proposal for a $100 per student increase for the Wilco students, $100 per student for the next three years. So, that's going to the board for approval at our next meeting.
Thank you. Any others?
Yes. We just finished our curriculum committee meeting as before we started our board meeting, at which time we discussed Algebra I and Geometry. Algebra I last year was a problem. Things have improved a lot, geometry also started out rough this year and is improving. We talked about ISAT results and the fact that our children are constantly going up, and so we had some real good things that we talked about during that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Am I right?
Union negotiations have started with our laboring group with the teachers and secretaries?
Illinois General Assembly is back in session, we have a new governor. I had the privilege of having a brief conversation with the governor at the inauguration. The state is in an abysmal hole financially. The income tax rolled back from 5% to 3.75%, which will leave the state with a structural deficit of at least $1.8 billion. In reality, that's probably closer to $4 billion. How they plan to balance that budget, we have no idea. Governor Rauner has a full plate, to say the least. Hopefully, the General Assembly will find a way to, at the very least, fund education appropriately, and the governor will go along with those fundings. And we will see what that comes forth in the coming weeks. The governor will be giving his State of the Budget address in the near future, I believe it's in a couple of weeks, and we will get a better picture of how he thinks the state should go forth with its budgetary issues. Audience participation, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the board this evening? Seeing none, hearing none, action reports, Dr. Mitchum?
Yes, Mr. Quigley, I'd like to ask that the board approve student due process cases A through G as amended.
Motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Saikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Next up, Ms. Kinder, high school summer program, summer school program.
Thank you, President Quigley. Tonight, we are seeking your approval on action report 10.1 regarding our high school summer school program for 2015. This includes the general high school program, driver education, and Phoenix summer program. Information regarding these programs was presented at the January 12 board meeting and can be found contained in this action report.
Right, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion on summer school program? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Saikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Next up, Mr. Grazafi, approving a plot of easement.
Yes, three actions this evening, starting with a plot of easement for the VNA Healthcare Clinic on the northeast corner of 53, just in front of Romeo Ville High Campus. I had presented an information report back in August to you regarding the request for an easement at that time. This has now been formally agreed to between both parties' attorneys, and so we are bringing it to you for formal approval.
Motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
Second?
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? I just have one brief comment. I spoke to Mayor Nook about this issue. The village has had some conversations with VNA Healthcare. They apparently are a very good partner, community partner, and that's one of the reasons that the village was kind of excited to have them come in. They did, for lack of a better term, they vetted them out a little bit, and we look forward to a good relationship with them in the community, so, thank you. We have a motion seconded, if there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Saikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Action Report 11.2 is a recommendation to approve a publicly bid emergency standby generators going in at 11 of our schools. Bid is being recommended to be awarded to Zonotherm Products Incorporated for a total cost of $407,000. This will support the myriad of kitchen equipment, emergency lighting, emergency power, as well as a lot of our technology infrastructure to maintain services in the event of power outages. We've got two buildings currently that have no backup power, and so we did a full assessment of all buildings to make sure we had enough capacity to provide emergency power as we move forward with integration of technology as well as VoIP, Voice-Over IP, or Internet telephones, moving away from the old copper. And so, again, the assessment matrix is attached, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Let me make a motion that we table 11.2 and 11.3 as we're spending money and there was no information report in our last meeting, to give both the board and the public time to review this information. I would need a second.
Second?
Move a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion about table 11.2, agenda items, per Mr. Goojus's request? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Saikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Ms. Hawks?
Thank you, President Quigley. Action Report 12.1 this evening, I'm seeking your approval on the revised consolidated action report for certified and classified personnel. This includes 15 items for certified personnel, 66 for classified personnel, two for administrative certified, and three for administrative classified personnel.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Saikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Next.
Information Report 13.1 this evening, we're bringing for your information and review some job descriptions. As you know, they're critical to all facets of the Human Resources Department, and they serve many purposes. Attached are four job descriptions for your review due to the reorganization within the Technology Department. They are, let me call off what they are. The Technician Level 2 Enterprise Support, Application Support, UI Developer/Programmer, Digital Learning Analyst, and Digital Learning Specialist. They're for your review this evening, and then I'll be seeking your approval on them at the February 9, 2015 board meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them at this time.
Any questions of Ms. Hawks on these? If you read these and subsequently have questions, I'm sure she'd be happy to take your phone call.
Definitely.
Or your email. Next, Algebra 2.
Yes, sir. Information Report 13.2, we are providing information regarding a curricular modification for Algebra 2, which is formerly known as Advanced Algebra. We're making this change to be in alignment with PARC specifications for course descriptions. I do want to mention that this is a change that is a natural progression after the changes that we have made previously with K-8 mathematics, as well as with ninth-grade algebra. Tonight, Kristy Bay, 612, Director of Mathematics, is here, and she's joined by four loyal educators as well, Ms. Lil, Ms. Burliner, Ms. Kazoni, and Ms. Eman, and they're going to briefly share some information with you about this curricular change that they've been working hard to implement.
Thank you, Ms. Kinder. Good evening, President Quigley, Vice President Goojus, members of the board, and senior leadership, and Valley View community. We are here this evening to provide information about our Algebra 2 curriculum that we would like to change for the 1516 school year to better prepare our students for college and careers. With me tonight are teachers from our Algebra 2 Committee that have been meeting monthly all year, reviewing the Common Core State Standards, and evaluating curricular resources to support implementation.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Lil, and I have actually had the fortunate experience to be teaching Algebra 1 Carnegie Learning for the past two years. Our Algebra 1 students are very familiar with family functions and can recognize different types of functions via graph, tables, and equations. Carnegie Learning set the stage for this in Algebra 1, and by having the students complete sorts and graphic organizers throughout the curriculum. I have taught Algebra 1 since we started the Carnegie Learning two years ago, and I have seen the students have discussions and implement the mathematical practices on a daily basis. This resource provides technology tips for the graphing calculator, as well as mathematics problems in context for the students to reflect upon and solve. I have seen my own students grow in their mathematics understanding from time they arrive in August and then when they leave at the end of the school year. I believe that using Carnegie Learning, Algebra 2, will continue to provide our students with that necessary tool to be college and career-ready. be college and career ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kimber Linner, and I'm actually a high school special education teacher in the maths department at Bolingbrook High School. The Carnegie Learning Algebra Two curriculum that we have been reviewing provides a large amount of resources to support implementation of the Common Core State Standards. Along with the student text, there are skills practice pages, as well as student assignment pages, which allows the teacher to differentiate for the different types of learner in his or her classroom. Our committee is fully aware this resource is just that, a resource, and we are always analyzing what to utilize and what to change for our students. This text provides many mathematical problems in context which allows our students to practice their literacy skills in mathematics. This models many of the sample PARC assessment questions we have been reviewing. Although we know this isn't, there isn't one perfect resources, resource that will support all our students, we feel that Carnegie Learning will help us the most as we implement the Common Core State Standards at the Algebra Two level. And I would just like to say personally, as a special ed teacher, it's been really great seeing this curriculum and the just multitude of resources. It's a lot of work sometimes pulling in different information. There's just a lot available here, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Why don't you girls stand over there so you can be on camera? Come on, move over. Move on. Move.
As always with math, I will, I will defer first to Member Sikora.
Mike? My, I just want to make one comment, and I want to thank you for the bottom-up buy-in, because that's really important. I want to thank you, teachers, for your support, and Kristi for going out and, and talking up, not down. That's what we need to do more of, and I think we're doing a good job of it.
We have a great committee this year.
So I want to thank you guys for your efforts in supporting what we're trying to do, because you're where the rubber hits the road. So.
We spend a lot of time in the East Room every month, and we've made the committee build towers as team-building activities. They've had some challenges with cards, making a tallest structure using a deck of cards, and we try to do things to build their, their knowledge and expertise. And we had two more members that wanted to be here tonight, but unfortunately, they're in grad school, and tonight was their first class that got switched from Wednesdays to Mondays.
Pass along my thank you.
So is this curriculum is following along with Algebra I? Because it appeared last year that, that Algebra I was frustrating some of our kids in math, so how have we worked that in, or have we taken those components in? That the kids are so, I know a lot of times, students are afraid of math, but the stress factor, have we looked at that? Or how have, have the grades come up in that area where kids are not so stressed in that area?
Yeah, so with any implementation, it takes time to, to see results and improvement, and so year two, we've definitely seen an initial result out of our semester one final exam, as well as semester one final grades. I think Jennifer can maybe add some light into what she's done. This is her second year teaching it, and maybe the differences she saw in year one versus year two.
Yes, I have taught Algebra last year and then this year, and I think, just as Kristi said, the idea that like, it is a new curriculum, and any new curriculum you have, the teachers are learning it at the same time the students are, and so anything that we're getting our feet wet in, it's going to be difficult the first year. We've done a lot more with being able to break it down for our students, having them, teaching them more how to like, work in their groups, and how to problem-solve with their groups, and just doing a lot more with teaching them those kinds of skills so they can progress through the math curriculum. And I've seen great advances with my students. I have my kids doing work that I, I could never have imagined, like, and I've worked at other schools in the past, like, students at that age using those critical thinking skills without just like, waiting for the answer from the teacher. And so like, seeing that in my class every day, I know we have been making great strides.
Thank you. Any other? Rick?
What are the, can you list all the strands that a freshman, math strands, that a freshman student could enter at our two high schools?
At our both high schools, there is the opportunity for some students to enter Honors' Advanced Algebra if they were an eighth grader taking Honors' Geometry at the high school.
Honors' Advanced Algebra.
Which now will be called Honors' Algebra Two.
Okay.
If the board approves at the next board meeting, our name change. Honors' Geometry, Honors' Algebra, and then Algebra.
Okay. So, you know, we're a unit district, so I always worry about our students as they matriculate through the district. So if we have students that are going, that have the potential to be freshmen that move into our eleventh grade standard track math course, what have we done at eighth grade to adjust for this new class that they may see?
Yeah, so everything is a buildup. So we started with where we want students to be with AP Calc, and then worked backwards from there. And so students that have that opportunity to go to Honors' Algebra Two as a freshman, which is the sophomore-level honors course.
Excuse me.
We have backmapped where they were and what math they received as seventh graders so that they can make those jumps. So we don't just skip a year of mathematics. We worked with our fifth grade in-district challenge program to identify the content standards they needed to teach in order to make that transition happen from sixth, from fifth to sixth grade.
So you're saying that the change you're making here, you've made some changes to at the middle school level, so those students, when they show up, that could potentially be going straight from middle school to this course, that'll be, they'll be in a line?
Correct.
Now, are those kids that are able to make that jump, are they, and I know we have a couple of different programs going on, I'm not sure exactly what we have going on now, are they able to make that jump from, are they taking the bus over to the school? Are we teaching it at the school?
Currently, we bus students from the middle school to the high school for a first period.
So most of the students that would go into this as freshmen, with the prior year, they would have been bussed over anyway, and then been taken?
Correct. And it's a very limited number of students across the district.
I just want to make sure that, we have had problems at the various, I'll call them jump points, from fifth to sixth, from eighth to ninth, without, with that alignment not being there. And I just wanted to make sure that was, that was there.
Any other questions or comments? If not, ladies, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your efforts. Next up, Legal Services.
Thank you. I do not have a report tonight.
Which is what everybody comes to hear. Next, Association Reports, AFT. Apparently no report. Oh. Valley View Council. Got to ask. Valley View Office Personnel Council. Thank you. Old business before the board this evening. Any new business before the board this evening? Any questions from the public on actions we have taken this evening? Hearing none, seeing none. Any announcements by the board?
Just for the general public, there was a lot of talk, would we consider using Pulaski Day and President's Day to make up the snow days that happened? That was taken to the union leadership, and union leadership decided that that was not a path they wanted to proceed by. So we won't be doing that. We'll be making up those days at the end of June.
Any other announcements by the board? Administration?
I have one. In the audience with us is Lindy Steves, and she's been in this district even longer than I have, and I just want to thank her for being here, because it seems like every time we have an administrative position that needs to be filled, we can call Lindy, and she's here. So her love for Valley View School District and our kids is, is not to be challenged. I'm not sure how much she goes on the Bolingbrook side of town. Have you been over there yet, Lindy, or not?
She's, hey, Romeoville faithful.
She's actually grown in her, and she's expanded her love to Bolingbrook High School, because there was a point in time when we worked together that she would not go on that side of the district. But anyway, Lindy, it's good to see you, and thank you for supporting us as always.
Any announcements by the public? Seeing none. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, the ayes have it. Please be safe, stay warm, be careful going home. We stand adjourned.